Okay, we're a little late, but I'll call the meeting back to order after closed session. First thing we will deal with is consent agenda items. And.
I had the consent agenda items, so I would make a motion to approve those.
And is there a second?
Second.
Sure. All in favor, say aye.
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 We are going to change the agenda a little bit because we have our school perceptions gentleman here to give us a report. And he's got two more to do tonight.
I do appreciate the virtual setup for this evening between my boss and I. I think we have a half a dozen board meetings tonight, so hello. So I do appreciate your flexibility. And I want to launch right in. So a little bit about me, a little bit about who we are as a company, very briefly. My name is Rob Demese. I serve as the research director at School Perceptions and I happen to be the lead on, or the lead project manager for your particular survey. We at School Perceptions, actually, we just celebrated our birthday, so we're now officially in our 20th year. So we were founded in 2002 and our mission in that time has never changed. We help educational leaders such as yourselves do three things primarily, gather, organize, and use data to make strategic decisions. We've conducted more than 10,000 staff, parent, student, and community surveys all in the name of school improvement. And those 10,000 surveys have actually spanned all 50 states now and over 800 districts. We've done these in all in the name of strategic planning and referendum planning processes, just what you are doing tonight. In terms of your specific survey, a little bit of the survey logistics here. So the survey was conducted in October and November of this year in 2021. And just as a reminder for the avenues for which people could take the survey. Households were mailed a paper copy and then they really had one of two options, so they could mark up that piece of paper as much as they wanted. And then we purposefully removed the district from that process. So in order to keep people's data confidential, that went directly back to us at School Perceptions. And same thing with the other route that people could take to take the survey. On the front of each paper survey, there was a 16-character alphanumeric code. Again, that data went straight back to us at School Perceptions, nothing went through the district. And the benefit of that was once somebody used that code and they hit submit and finish, that code expired. That went away so that they could not continually take the survey over and over again and skew your data. For the most part, people do take the survey online, although we have heard that a lot of people like to have that tangible piece of paper in their hand when they're actually taking the survey, but nevertheless. About a quarter or so of your survey respondents decided to take it on paper and send it directly back to us for a participation rate that was just a hair under 20%. So really good news there. We feel very confident about making accurate predictions based on this participation rate. So nothing on this slide is concerning. I feel good about it. And then in terms of who took your survey. So what this slide is showing here is the percentage of each person or the percent of each bucket that identified themselves as being part of that age group. In other words, 1% of your survey respondents identified themselves as being in the 18 to 25 age group. And then what I like to do as the, as the research director, I wouldn't be a good researcher if I didn't go onto the Census Bureau website to compare what your survey takers look like compared to the actual proportions of your community. About 7% of your population is in the 18 to 25 age range. And by the way, that's not just Amory, that's the school district boundaries, not the municipality's boundaries. That's pretty, that's pretty common, actually. This number right here usually hovers about 1, 2, maybe 3% sometimes. Which, you know, actually unfortunately is pretty indicative of election turnout as well. The 18 to 25 age group is the least likely to vote and they're the least likely to take a survey. So for better or worse, you're actually right on track here with about 1% of your survey takers being in that age range. 26 to 34 was pretty on track, actually. 8% of your survey takers fell into this bucket and a little over 9% of your community is in this bucket right here. In terms of 35 to 54, you were a little overrepresented in your survey takers here. Again, that is neither surprising nor concerning to me. The 35 to 54 age group is really prime working age and it's prime parenting age. And by definition, your, your staff and your parents are going to be the most connected members of your school community. And they have thoughts and they have thoughts about the direction of the school. So it's not surprising that they both take surveys and turn out to vote. So overrepresentation there is not at all surprising. Your 55 to 64 was almost spot on. 16% of your survey respondents were here and I want to say, write down, 16.7% of your community falls in this bucket. So again, almost spot on. And then your 65 plus, again, a little overrepresented here. About 23% of your community falls here, but 30% of your survey takers were in the 65 plus category. Honestly, that's really good news. Unlike 18 to 25-year-olds, the other side of that coin are the 65 plus who don't miss elections. They are your most loyal voters. We have to know what they think and they are the most likely to be on a fixed income. So it's really, really important to us that we hear what the 65 plus population is thinking. We do a little bit more so than how they're represented in the population, so that's a thumbs up. I really do like that from the survey respondent perspective. Do you live in the school district of Amory was the next question that we asked. 94% of people said, yep, I do. 6% of people said, no, I don't. There are really three buckets of people that fit in here. Because we always get the question, well, why would School Perception send surveys to people that don't live here? So we did ask whether, whether people live in the school district of Amory so they could have property there. They could have a second home, they could have a vacation home in the Amory area, but that is not their primary residence. Or staff who don't necessarily live within the district's boundaries. But by nature of having their staff email address on file, they receive the survey. And parents who open and roll into the district, again, by nature of having their email address on file, receive a copy of the survey. Now, however, this is a big however here. When we move forward with some of our analyses, we are going to strip these people out because they cannot decide an election in the school district of Amory. These people can't. So in the analyses moving forward, we are going to focus only on the 94% of people who have their primary residence and vote within your school district's boundaries. In which municipality do you live? I did double check this with Sean just to see if it was kind of what he was expecting. And he said, yeah, that looks pretty much what I would expect in terms of population centers, so. A little under a third of your survey takers were from Amory itself, a little under a quarter were from Lincoln. And then I'd say kind of the, the next tier of proportional people is in Black Rock and Alden. And then so on down the line, including a handful of people down there in Balsam Lake and Clayton. So I do see a wide range of representation, but again, sounds like the, the areas where you'd expect to have people take a survey, we are. And then we asked, are you an employee of the school district of Amory? I want to see two pieces of the pie here, but in terms of employees, it's not surprising that one piece of the pie greatly overshadows the other. Frankly, the majority of your community is not employed by the school district. So the fact that over eight and 10 people said, nope, I'm not employed by the district, is pretty much spot on. But nevertheless, I did check the denominator here with, with Sean and it does sound like you got pretty good staff representation as well, so that is excellent. And then we said, do you have a child or children attending the school district of Amory school? Again, I want to see some, some two hefty pieces of the pie here. And we do. Again, we have to know what parents are thinking because they are your most connected members of your school community. But again, most people in your community are not parents of somebody that, of a, of a school-aged child. So the fact that we're a little over half over here at 57%, fairly normal. Nothing stands out to me either. I want to see both groups represented. I do. Then in terms of background information, so some of the slides that you see here are going to be absolutely no different than what was on your survey. And we do that very much on purpose. We want this report to be a one-stop shop for, for you moving forwards that you don't have to dig a paper copy of your survey out of a desk drawer or scratch your heads a couple of weeks down the road and say, you know, what did we say or how did we describe that or whatever the case may be. We want you to be able to look at just this report and have all that information ready to go. And we recognize that not everybody chose to take the survey and you may have people moving in. And in the name of transparency, we want to be fully open about what was on the survey. So you could look to this when it's posted on your website and see what exactly was on the survey itself. So in the background information here, we talked a little bit about how you're doing academically and the fact that you've exceeded academic expectations according to the latest state report cards. We talked a little bit about how you were doing financially, both relative to yourself over the last couple of years and relative to other members of the Middle Border Conference. And then in your survey, we shifted a little over to the facility background. And we said, really, there are three major themes that came out of the facility study. One of them being the buildings and grounds and those improvements needed there. The outdated classrooms and labs and the support areas that also need to be improved. And support areas in this case were defined as places that are, well, places like your cafeteria, inner kitchen with our children, but they're not necessarily learning environments. And then we asked, would you support the school district of Amory pursuing a referendum to fund the issues identified above? And here we get to our first important set of data. Now, at first, it looks like there's a lot going on here and there is, but let's take this one column at a time. So again, I'm going to purposefully sound like a broken record here. These are district residents only. So we stripped out that 6%, focusing on that 94%. And a little over two-thirds of all respondents said, yes, I support you pursuing a referendum. But the issue that is that, that over, over represents a little bit staff and parents. So we wanted to segregate this a little and look at how different groups are feeling. So your staff over eight and 10 or 86% said, yep, go ahead and pursue a referendum. And parents who are not staff were right around three-quarters or so, 76% said, yes, go ahead and pursue a referendum. Now, to reiterate what I'm saying, in any given community, about 1% of, of adults in that community are staff. About 25% are parents of a school-aged children. So yes, these bars are high, but there aren't, there simply aren't that many people that are included in these categories. Now, I want to take you over to the purple people. These are non-parents, non-staff. So in any given community, about 75% of people fall into this column right here. So when you do see these colors up on my screen, the first place I want your eyes to go are to, are to the purple bar because the proportion, the, the majority of your community, the largest proportion is going to be included right here. Nevertheless, over 50% support coming out of the gate. 57% of non-parents, non-staff said, yep, go ahead and support, or excuse me, we support you pursuing a referendum. Then moving down, the other hump that stands out to me a little bit here is 28% of non-parents, non-staff said, nope, don't pursue a referendum. To contextualize that a little bit, it's pretty close to what we normally see. It might be a hair high, but really nothing that really caught my eye. I would say that in any given community, right around a quarter of people on average say no. Without seeing what the details are, any, any given quarter of a community is going to be against raising the property taxes through your mill rate at the district. So the fact that this is 28%, again, not surprising to me, a hair high, but really nothing that sent off any blinking lights. And then finally, over here, 16% of non-parents, non-staff said, I'm not sure, I need more information. I'm going to come back to this in a second in terms of how these people fall. But for right now, note that coming out of the gate, a little over majority of your non-parents, non-staff are supportive of you pursuing a referendum. And then we said, well, if the community does support pursuing a referendum, the district put together the following plan, the following recommended plan. And we noted what was in it. So we talked a little bit about some of the high school projects that could go in there, getting shots straight out of your survey. And then noted that the recommended plan would also include following projects at the other schools. And then made certain to call out and disclose the cost of the recommended plan at the bottom of that page for $35 million. And then we asked arguably the most important question. We said, would you support a $35 million referendum to fund the recommended plan as described on the previous page? We disclosed what the annual tax increase would be and also wanted to disclose that these were interest rates that had the assumption of between 3 and 1/4 and 3 and 1/2%. And then noted what that would look like in terms of tax impacts relative to some of the previous years in Amory. So same breakdown here, all residents, 2/3 of residents said, yes, we support the recommended plan as it was described. Staff over eight and 10 support the recommended plan as described, that was 83%. Parents who are not staff, about 3/4, 76% said, yep, we support the recommended plan as described. And then 55% of non-parents, non-staff, again, most of your community is contained on this slide right here, over the majority. So obviously, as you know, in any given referendum, passage is 50% plus one. Right now, you're looking at 55% coming out of the gate of non-parents, non-staff that, that are leaning towards yes for a recommended plan. But let me revisit what I said before down here in terms of the undecided folks. So I was telling, telling some of the Amory team earlier this week that for better or worse, people in the Midwest are too nice, which is great because they're nice and sometimes not always that handy for survey results. People know that when push comes to shove and rubber meets the road, when they enter that ballot box, they know they're going to tell you no. But telling you no feels mean, it feels rude, it feels like they shouldn't tell you that right now, even though they fully know that's how it's going to go later on. So they check undecided. But in our 20 years of experience, what we've learned is that about 2/3 of this undecided count right here, these gray people are going to fall toward the bottom in red and about 1/3 are going to move up to the top towards your green. So even if I lowball that and say that that's 4%, right now, then you're pushing upwards of 60% support for your recommended plan, which relatively speaking is quite high, 60% support for any given referendum. You know, it's, it's not surprising to see a great deal of referendum results lying between 45 and 55%. So the fact that you're pushing 60% does show me that there is a pretty substantial support for voters for the recommended plan. But it's not the only thing we tested in your survey. There were two other projects that could be included in a facilities referendum. So as we turn the page then for survey takers, the early childhood center was next. And we talked about what that would do and what the estimated cost would be. And then we said, would you support expanding a referendum to build an early childhood center? And again, disclosed what it would cost. And every month, what the cost would be every month for every $100,000 worth of property value. Same breakdown here, the same order. So in terms of all residents, 54% said, yes, we support expanding the referendum for that early childhood center. Splitting that apart, your staff residents were at approximately 77%. Your parents, non-staff were at about 60%. And then we saw a decline here. So non-parents, non-staff in terms of the early childhood center, that was at 42%. So that is now below your, your 50% threshold. And if I carry over my undecided, again, you know, let's just say that's ballpark about 5% or a little under 5%. Even at my tip-top for the moment then, I'm looking at about 47% support for, for the early childhood center. So relative to the recommended plan, it is lower. And unlike the recommended plan, now you're on the other side of 50%. Now you're looking at your non-parents, non-staff who do not break the 50% threshold for, for support for, for the early childhood center. And then finally, there was the swimming pool. And this particular question said, would you support the district exploring partnerships over the next year to build a swimming pool? And this, this turned up some interesting data here, again, district residents only. The, there are two humps that stand out. In terms of parents who are not staff members, about 2/3 did say, yes, we would explore, support you exploring partnerships. But that was the highest group in terms of parents and recall that they're about 25% of any given community. Otherwise, the other bar here that catches my eye is this 50% of non-parents, non-staff. Why does that catch my eye? Well, not only is it at 50% already, but I want to draw your eyes back to what the question actually said. So right now, this wasn't necessarily for a tax increase. This was me as a survey taker offering you permission as a board to explore partnerships. I can tell you explore to the cows come home and that doesn't affect my wallet. So the fact that we're already at about 50% here in terms of exploring partnerships, I would say that, that that's kind of high coming out of the gate. And again, undecided, if you add about, you know, 2/3 of people here that are undecided, say that's, you know, about 9%. That'll switch over here to no. Now you're looking at almost the flip side of your, of your recommended plan. Now you're looking at over majority that are saying no, non-parents, non-staff, from then don't even explore the partnerships. So let me go through some of the other metrics of your survey and then circle back to some of these data surrounding your projects. And I'll review them a little bit and certainly take questions from you as well, but I do want to finish off the other elements of your survey. In terms of your communication, the best way to read this is close one eye and turn your head to the right. We asked, how do you like to receive school and district information? And this is ordered in descending order by non-parents, non-staff. So kudos to the Amory Free Press. It's nice to see that a local paper is still around in your area. Over 70% of non-parents, non-staff said, yes, we like to receive information from this local paper. And a little, little less than that, but still pushing around 70% of your non-parents, non-staff said, I like to receive my information from district newsletters. And then you see a little bit of a drop off here, so that in terms of non-parents, non-staff, to some extent, they're looking at your website and social media. But that's really not surprising in terms of non-parents, non-staff, it's kind of a push-pull here. Non-parents, non-staff would rather have information pushed to them because they don't currently have kids in school. Whereas your parents are a little bit more willing to, to, to do some pulling here and seek out the information. So parents, on the other hand, like to see some information on, on your website, social media. And then again, I would say tier two for parents are district newsletters and the Amory Free Press. Now, chances are a lot of communication that you do anyhow is probably through most of these channels regardless. But I like to see this because it does kind of give you an idea for, for the bang for your buck here. And then we did ask the communication section for parents only. So now these are just my blue people, how do you like to receive school and district information? So in these school-specific channels, nearly nine in 10 said emails, about 2/3 said text messages and half said, I like the teacher and classroom newsletters. And then I would say there's kind of a second tier of go-to sources of information for your parents. Things like conferences, family folders, power schools, seesaw, and phone notifications. Not a lot of draw, however, for parents in terms of Google Classroom. And now, this is actually the part where it's fun to be a messenger, your overall satisfaction. So if you do have a board packet in front of you, this is actually about, I don't know, a couple of hours on a date. But we had a couple of surveys closed today and when I happened to look at your results earlier on, I actually went up. And that's pretty darn impressive considering there wasn't even a whole lot of room to go up here. So I only have two thumbs, but they're both up for right now because this is, the best part of my job is presenting data like this to you because these are so, so high. These four metrics, which are standard on all of our surveys now, said, how well are we doing in each of the following areas? Lowest I can be is one at four, highest I can be is great at four, so my range has to be in there. But I want to draw your attention over here to the far right-hand side. So in terms of a percentile, a percentile is, it tells you how many districts are below you and above you. So if I'm at the 50th percentile, I'm at the median, meaning half the districts are doing worse than me and half of districts are doing better than me. When you're at the 99th percentile here, you don't really get any higher than that. 99% of districts, according to survey respondents, are doing worse than you in terms of how they perceive their district to be delivering a high-quality education. That leaves us pretty darn small, pretty darn small pool of people that are above you. Same thing as we go down the line. You're at the 81st percentile for building pride in the community, 83rd percentile for keeping the public informed, and 70th percentile for managing your funds appropriately. I got out of a meeting earlier this week when all of these were barely pushing above the 25th percentile. That data is a whole heck of a lot less fun to present. Here, I, I mean, I don't even, this is, this is flabbergasting to me. I mean, I recognize that somebody has to be at the 99th percentile, but it's fun to let you know that you are. So I won't dwell, but really, this is, this is some really, really awesome numbers here. And then this is kind of some of the corroborating information. On a scale of zero to 10, how likely would you be to recommend the district to a friend or family member? The way I visualize this is if I could pull this chart out of my computer and set it up and make it into a little 3D stand, I want it to be top-heavy, I want it to fall over. And it would. So you have a lot more green, a lot more yellow, and a lot more orange than you do down here at the bottom in terms of red and maroon. In fact, I passed along to Sean that I'm not sure I've seen this bar any longer in any survey that I've seen since we instituted this question in spring. The fact that almost exactly a third of people are giving you the highest score that they can on this, I mean, it's, it's, it's good news. Your average is 7.71 and I think it speaks to how you get to these percentiles here as well. So overall, lots of satisfaction. So let's bring it back together then in review. Would the recommended plan be supported? I want to dig into this one more time and show you a little bit on paper, so to speak, about what my calculations are here. So resident population assumptions, you heard me say this a few minutes ago, but non-parents, non-staff are about 75% of the community, community. Parents are about 25%, staff are about 1%. So when I go back and I wait these people proportionally according to their level of support, this is what I'm seeing. Of those responding definitely yes or probably yes, you're at about 60.3% according to their proper weight. When I include 1/3 of my undecided respondents, then I'm seeing about 64% support from your community in terms of the recommended plan. So again, quite, quite high here in terms of potential support for the recommended plan. What did we learn? A majority of all key subgroups support pursuing a referendum to update the schools. That's what I refer to as the permission slip question. This comes after, okay, I understand the needs, do I support you pursuing something? A majority of all subgroups said yes. Similarly, a majority of all key subgroups would likely support a referendum to fund the recommended plan. What else did we learn? I would say that there's support in concept for the Early Childhood Learning Center, but it may be wise to explore the project in a future phase and focus right now on the recommended plan. And then finally, while parents would like the district to explore partnerships to build a pool, your broader community does not share this support for those pool partnerships. And then finally, the fun bit, the district score is above average in terms of the four main satisfaction indicators as compared to similar school districts. So let me pause there. I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
I know you have questions back to back. That was a really well-laid-out presentation of the data. And I think it really speaks to what this community values and what they want to see happen here. And it gives a board a pretty clear decision, I think, of what we need to focus on going forward, so.
Yeah, this survey, very complete, very nice summary. Shows pretty clear what the community is willing to support, so. It's a big help for the board.
My only question would be the participation rate. I guess I was disappointed to see the participation rate at under 20%. I'm wondering if that's pretty average. I guess I would like to see a higher percentage rate.
Yeah, I mean, the higher we go, the happier we are. But I would say that even, even with surveys that have been quite a bit below 20%, we still feel really confident in our predictions. And to be honest, I could see that you see a great deal of fluctuation maybe during the first 400 to 500, 550 surveys that come in. And then after that, and just as a reminder, I think you were at 1037 or a little bit over 1,000 surveys. After the first 500 or so, the deviations in respondents really quiet down and your dirt, and your survey data settles down. So it's interesting, even as more data comes in, the, the percentage points don't change a whole lot. And the other reason why I point that out as interesting is your, your participation rate went up quite a bit in the last couple of days. And the reason, the reason that's important to point out is because that's usually the non-parents, non-staff that come in. And by definition, again, because your non-parents, non-staff are the least connected members of your community because they don't have kids there and don't have, and are not employed by the school district, they tend to also show the least amount of support. So the fact that the, the percentage points really didn't change a whole lot tells me that what we captured is still pretty representative of your wider community. And on top of that, again, you know, I guess for better or worse, when I scroll back here a little bit, there weren't a whole lot of people that were, oops, this is the wrong one. There weren't a whole lot of people that were undecided. So yes, about 33% of non-parents, non-staff said no to the recommended plan, again, 55% said yes. It's not uncommon, though, to see this undecided in the middle here, sometimes push 20%. So, you know, for better or worse, it seems like people have made up their minds in your community, which is good data clarity. And the fact that, you know, yes, I love to see a higher percentage of, of participation rate, it's not concerning to me. And the fact that your data didn't change a whole lot tells me that we are capturing a pretty good bit of, of how your community in general feels.
Would you say then that it would be a fair statement to say that? Because when you look at the data that comes in initially, that people that feel strongly one way or the other would be more likely to fill out a survey fairly quickly and return it. And then once you see that data starting to calm down, it's more representative of the general public. Even if they hadn't taken the survey, they don't feel that strongly necessarily one way or the other, but would be indicative of the survey results that we have.
I would say it's a matter of convenience as, and connection as opposed to passion one way or the other. In other words, I think parents and staff take it right away because they're used to getting emails from the school and they look a lot. Whereas your, your non-parents, non-staff, because they don't have a school email address and because they don't have those email addresses on file, they are getting it through their household. And it just tends to sit on counters a little bit longer, which isn't a huge concern if people get it back to us. But I would say that it's not necessarily your, your most passionate people that answer first, it's just a matter of who received it first.
Is there a discrepancy in support or non-support versus from email versus paper copy surveys? Do you have that data? I don't even know if you have that data. I don't know if you track that.
Uh, you know, we track, we track how many come in on paper, but I don't think that that is a, making up a word here, disagregable. That's not a metric by which we disaggregate, so I don't know. Either way, I guess I haven't given them much thought before, but either way, I, the, the way that they're presented here are just the way that I typically think about it because it kind of in. I guess I haven't given them much thought before, but either way, I, the, the way that they're presented here are just the, the way that I typically think about it because it kind of in. It kind of falls in descending order of support. So arbitrarily going to say this, well, that's a bad example. Going back to the, one of my first slides here. Usually this is the way you see it. It's usually a step staircase down, whereas staff are by far the most supportive. Followed by parents kind of being in the middle and then non-parents, non-staff being the lowest level of support. And usually there's a pretty good correlation between non-parents, non-staff and, and they have to take a paper copy. So I guess my thinking out loud, roundabout, rambling answered your question is, I think my paper has probably captured a great deal of these purple people.
Any other questions? It's well for staff here at the school. Ultimately. I think the community really respects what our staff is doing.
Yeah, as a, as a former teacher myself, I'm going to go down to this slide and leave it here because this is, this is the happy one.
There you go.
But they're all happy.
Thank you, Rob.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
All right. Take care. Have a good night.
Okay, next we'll go on to the community comment section. And I'll read this. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Welcome to this meeting in the Board of Education of the School District of Amory. We are pleased that you are interested in the school district education issues. Your input may be very beneficial to the development of appropriate educational programs. You may address the board only during the community comments time on the agenda. Amory School District residents, district employees and guests invited by the board may address the board at the discretion of the presiding board member. In order for the meeting to flow smoothly, we would appreciate that the following guidelines be followed by anyone wishing to address the Board of Education. For those wishing to speak before the board, a sign up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign up sheet is deemed to be out of order, the presiding board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Comment time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time limit may be increased or decreased at any time by the presiding board member. The time allocated for community comments may also be ended at the determination of the presiding board member. Common sense suggestions related to the school district operation are welcome. Personal criticism of members of the Board of Education or employees of the Amory School District is out of order. Please stand to be recognized. After being recognized, give your name and address for the record. The board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators may get back to you within the next week. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda of a future board meeting. And I thank you for your cooperation and we have Julie Verkant.
Julie Verkant, Blackbrook Township. The question, are we teaching CRT in our schools has been asked many times by many different parents of this, of this board and administrator. Each time we have been told emphatically no. The language may be altered as they found that the concepts of CRT are indeed being taught to our children in the school district. Tonight you'll be presenting Vision 2025. As you go through this presentation, I want to advise everyone watching this to notice the verbiage and review of the new strategic plan. As available on our school's website under People Services and then Social and Emotional Learning labeled by Castle. There is a power standard set for each building in our district. I believe everyone has heard of United States Attorney General Marika Garland. Directing the FBI to target parents speaking up at the board meetings about abasing our children and teaching of the CRT. For those who don't know the ties to AG Garland has with the teaching of CRT, I'll give a brief summary. AG Garland's daughter is married to Zan Tanner, co-founder and president of Panorama Education. This is an education data mining company that promotes CRT tenants. Because the term CRT has become so well known, they have changed the title CRT to something much friendlier sounding. Social emotional learning. Keywords of diversity, equity, inclusion are common, one of the phrases in CRT. Now they're the keywords in SEL. You'll need to look at our, back at our July 19th board meeting to the presentation that Kitty Johnson and Kate Weizenbeck did. The mental health grants. SEL is all over our school website as well as Wisconsin DPI. You'll need to search the keyword panorama and the, the search button on the DPI website to have all the trainings panorama has done for school personnel. As well as surveys used at the middle and high school level, including our own District of Amory. If you look at those survey questions, you should not be shocked to see that the same questions our children were just asked on October 27th for the. YRBS DPI survey. We've been told that the survey is to help get funding into our schools with these in-depth personal questions. So let me ask you, if we have students respond to the survey, they have seriously contemplated suicide several times in the last few weeks. How was that student going to get help? It's an anonymous survey. You aren't able to help that child. It's another statistic used to get funding for our school. It's only about the money, not about the child. That child is still left struggling if not showing overt tells for someone else to pick up on. We're still failing that child. Now, not only do we have that struggling child. How many more kids are we going to add to this because we've now put ideas in their heads of not only contemplating suicide, but how to commit suicide? Some will say their website says we're adapting our SEL program from the collaborative for economic, academic, social and emotional learning Castle. Castle is a leading SEL provider and lists several CRT terms as five core competencies with equity focus. Including cultural competency, diversity and equity, equity, racial equity and inclusiveness. Psychological manipulation of a student's values and thinking is found in self-awareness, core competency with the explanation. Awareness of beliefs, mindsets and biases and how they influences one's behavior. Panorama is used by Castle for the data mining of our children. Soviet-style collect, uh, collectivist worker training was brought to American schools by socialist John Dewey. It's found in the relationship core competency, collaborative problem solving, PBL. In 2015, every student succeeds act codified common core at the federal level and changed the primary purpose of education. From academic to social emotional learning. The ESSA mandates an inclusion of SEL in schools. Make it a very convenient vehicle for implementing Marxist indoctrination with CRT. Unless I forget a link, another link to piece our children's being data mined. Looked at the collected survey data is used to plan SEL lessons. Panorama has ranked the number one SEL measurement tool and report from Titan, Titan Partners with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. It's time we follow the money. We have asked respectfully and repeatedly for copies of the Esser grant applications. We've been told there are no applications for us to view. Yet we review any information on the DPI website and repeatedly states applications. What are we trying to hide from the way the parents and taxpayers? We've heard the term follow the money. Well, we are and we don't like what is leading us. We send our kids to school to learn reading, writing and arithmetic. Instead, we have kids in elementary school and intermediate school learning four ways to solve a simple math problem. And being told we have to do it how school teaches us and how you guys were taught. I have children who don't know the times tables like the back of their hands. I have children who can barely read cursive and definitely don't know how to write it as we teach them at home. History, civics, what about those? I asked my nephew what they were learning about the Arizona audit and they had no idea what was going on in civics class. Is our American past perfect? No, far from it. We need to know and understand our past so we don't repeat it in the future. It's exactly what we are doing, but our kids don't know that because they're no longer being taught it.
Thank you. Next is Steph Jansen.
Stephanie Jansen. Garfield Township. I'm here tonight on behalf of Moms for Liberty of Pol County, a nonprofit organization who works to empower parents. And are committed to holding elected leaders accountable while also focusing on preserving crucial founding principles of our nation. Limited government, personal responsibility and individual liberty. Mom for Liberty, Moms for Liberty currently holds more than 152 chapters in 32 states and over 60,000 members. I'd like to thank you for discussing the subject of the Esser Grants and the Esser three grants tonight. I only wish that I could hear the presentation before I made my comments. This is something that I have, I have quite a few questions about. In September, I submitted an open request requesting a final copy and complete Esser application. From the district containing all required written responses, including but not limited to the details of program planning and participation. I received an email later from the district attorney stating that the district has not completed or submitted an Esser application at this time. Public law records. Do not require the production of existing documents. Or only require the production of existing documents. I understand that this application could have been done through Wise Grants. You could be plugging your information in to the application, but I'm not sure or. Why there wouldn't be an option to save or print the final submissions of why or how we're receiving these grants. Part of, if you look on DPI all over the Esser grant information that's put in there, there's three Esser grants. Each Esser grant has. Clearly stated, applications will be available in Wise Grants in April of 2021. For the Esser two grant, that was for the Esser two grant. For the Esser one grant applications for LEAs become available. Grants will not be, they will be reviewed as they come in. Part of the conditions in the application. You will tie costs to one or more of the following program types, preparedness and response to COVID-19. Outreach and services to special populations addressing long-term closures. Education technology, mental health support, addressing after-school and summer activities, continued staff employment. I think Julie touched about some of the concerns that parents have as far as social emotional learning and what that looks like. As far as being tied to. Same concepts or ideas as critical race theory. What do I need to do to get a copy of what was, what we, or how we took that money? On what terms did we take this grant? We're looking at almost $3 million. I asked for the application. I don't know if I'm not using the correct words. According to the. Requirements, section 427 highlights six types of barriers. Gender, race, national origin, color, disability and age. That needs to be. Explained in order to receive the grant. One of the examples in the 427, it's all on DPI. As an applicant, there's four different examples. These are just examples. As an applicant that proposes a project to increase school safety might describe the special efforts it will take to address concern. Of lesbian, gay, bisexual and transgender students and efforts to reach out to involve the families of LGBT students. And there's another one in here about. An online group. We've also requested information pertaining to. Oops, sorry. Curriculum books that were available to our kids. I met with two members in this room a few months ago with my concerns about what our kids have access to. Not banning books. I know that's been a concern, but are the books that our kids have access to age appropriate? I think it's not just the responsibility of the school. I don't think it falls directly on the principal. But there are books here that are concerning and I'm going to read a little bit from one. It's Me and Earl and the Dying Girl by Jesse Andrews. This book is in the high school. I checked this. On the online and from the hard copy that I was, the hard list that I was given. So the, this is one of the books that is concerning. I think that if this book was made into a movie, many of us would not want our kids to view it. I'm not here to tear anybody apart. I think that we all need to work together on this. I think that it's. We have individuals in positions in our school that change hands. You're, you're taking on. You're taking on somebody's position and the rules and what they accepted the years before. I'm just asking that we take this seriously and that we address some of the books. I have an entire list if anybody wants to look and see what. We have concerns with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we will go to our administrative reports. Josh?
All right, for the end of October into November. Our FFA crew returned from Nationals in Indianapolis with an extremely successful trip. Mr. Meyer was very proud of all the recognition and awards that they received. The YRBS survey was completed in connection with Wisconsin DPI on October 27th. Our girls cross-country team finished 10th out of 16th, out of 16 teams at the state cross-country meet. For those that had the chance to go attend the school musical Mary Poppins, November 4th through November 7th. To quote the musical itself, it was practically perfect. Veterans Day, we had our annual Veterans Day ceremony on November 11th at the high school. Wonderful day, had a former AHS classmate. Our class of 1986, David Porter was our guest speaker. We began our term two on this past Tuesday, November 9th, last week. Future events, all winter sports practices are officially rolling as of today, so all of our sports teams are going. We had our first competition tonight. Our girls basketball team had a scrimmage at the middle school. We have a practice ACT test coming up for our ninth through 11th graders on Thursday, November 18th. We're trying some new things out with a company that we've been working with, with ACT. Our ninth graders are going to take something called the ACT 89. And our 10th and 11th graders are taking what's called the pre-ACT. So from that test, we're hopefully going to be able to get some good data about areas. That our kids are doing well in, areas where we need to focus on our target growth. And then students will get individual reports as well. So it's usually about a two-week turnaround from when we take the test. The goal is for students to be able to see how they did in English, math, et cetera. And then they can find out what some of their areas for growth are and those that are really intrinsically motivated. Basically have three, four months to try to get those areas up. Tomorrow night, we have the Fall Band Concert and the Baked Potato Dinner fundraiser. I believe that starts at 5 o'clock, Aaron, for the potato fundraiser. The band concert starts at 6:30, high school and middle school. On November 29th, we have new member induction for the National Honor Society at the high school. And on December 13th, we have our winter choir concert.
All right, as Josh mentioned, we have the band concerts starting tomorrow and we're excited for that. We follow that up at the middle school in December with a Christmas concert. And so that by that point then, our seventh and eighth grade bands will be playing in November. And then our sixth grade band, our jazz band and our choirs perform in December. And oftentimes our students don't get to see their peers perform, so we have a, a second concert. During the day on December 17th in the afternoon so that the students perform in front of their peers, which has always been fun. And we followed it up with kind of a. Warrior way celebration to talk about how we're doing. We started our middle school food drive and I was incorrect on my, when I published this to the board. Our actual food drive has started already and we're involved in it. And it runs through the middle of December. And the food will be donated to the Amory Food Shelf. We're excited for that program. We've been doing it many years. We have some great theater field trips coming up. Our sixth graders are leaving on Thursday to the Minneapolis Chillin's Theater to see a production of Annie. And we're kind of excited for that because it ties into some of the Great Depression and things that they're learning in history class. Our seventh and eighth graders will see the gift of the Magi done by the Festive. Our seventh and eighth graders will see the gift of the Magi done by the Festival Theater, and the Festival Theater started having some issues with their own theater up in St. Croix Falls, and so they are under, were under construction, and they have been coming to our auditorium to perform, and it makes it really easy for us to get in and out to see a show. So we'll be seeing that on December 14th. Also coming up this Friday is our Human Growth and Development Day. That's for eighth grade students. And the Human Growth and Development Day is centered on how to prevent unwanted pregnancy and sexually transmitted diseases, and the boys and girls are separated for that presentation. Boys are with a male staff member and Dr. Gary Williamson, and the females are with a female staff member and Dr. Haley Combs, and they're split into small groups and just to be able to hear a presentation on, on that. The direction from that comes from the Human Growth and Development Committee, which is made up of staff, parents, students, members of the ministry, and medical providers that help design and direct programming for the district. We have some great staff training coming up. We have a PDH tomorrow night on Discovery Education, which is an online source for staff that they could go out and pick up materials for math or English or just a way to see lesson plans that other people are using. We have some, Mrs. De Ambrose and I are doing, leading a training campaign with our staff soon on the PLC and understanding assessments and standards and basically how to help increase student achievement. And then finally, our last day for the trimester is coming up on December 1st, and so at that point, students at the middle school will be, will be changing math and English teachers, and then their applied arts or their term classes switch once more, so they get a chance to see lots of different people. So that's the dates that are coming up at the middle school. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Good evening. The English Language Arts 4K through Grade 5 ELA adoption is ongoing. K-5 teachers met virtually with a representative from Holton Mifflin. Inter-reading is their program next week. Teachers will be meeting virtually with American Reading Company. We have a reading specialist that'll be presenting on that curriculum. The Halloween Carnival offered by the IPO was a huge success. It's a wonderful fundraiser here for our building, and we thank the community for their support, and it was fun to see all of the students and children in their costumes. It was a very busy night, so thank you to the IPO for that. Third grade through Grade 5 students were able to preview the high school musical, Mary Poppins, on November 3rd, and I agree with Josh, it was absolutely wonderful, so we appreciate our students being able to go over and watch the first half of it. The IS data team met today, actually, to review our new data regarding just our school, so we've come up with some action plans and set some short-term and long-term goals. The IS has formed a trauma-sensitive committee that aligns with the district's mission and vision goals. We will meet every other month on supporting staff and students. AIM classrooms visited the St. Croix Falls Hatchery and Interstate Park. Students collected their trout eggs, and they are thriving and growing in the AIM classroom neighborhood, if anyone is interested in seeing them. AIM is a member of the Ice Age Trail Saunter Program and incorporates hikes into our curriculum as often as they can. And finally, some upcoming dates. On November 23rd, all students will participate in a school-wide celebration of swimming at the center, and then finally, we have Thanksgiving break. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. An update on our elementary fundraiser. Our, it was our second year using Cherrydale as our company of choice, and again, it was very successful. We raised $11,124.05 for profit. So 9,620 of that was on online sales, and we, several years ago, added a cash donation possibility, option for families, and that number was $1,503.50. So that fundraiser is proving to be quite successful for our school. Some of the money are, the Parents as Partners Committee tells us how to use that money, and basically, we use it for transportation to our big all-school fundraisers such as the Pumpkin Patch that we just did, and this winter we'll be going to Trau Hagen, hopefully. We also support classroom resources, playground equipment, books for our reading incentive program, and prizes for our Warrior Way PBIS behavior program. So thank you to the community, the parents, everybody who has supported that fundraiser for Leon Elementary School. Our Parents as Partners has a meeting this Thursday, November 18th, at 8:15 a.m. We have a special guest speaker. Again, it is Dr. Dierfler. Sean Dierfler is going to be there. Do you remember that, Mr. Dierfler? And it's just going to be a deeper dive into the school's perception survey, so if you're interested in asking questions and getting more information, you have the big guy there, so he, and he does a nice job. So if you are unable to make that meeting, but you would like to join via Zoom, just contact the elementary secretary, Gina, and she will set you up with a Zoom link. Just, we need to know that by the night before. It's Christmas time, so we have some fun things coming, but I'm not skipping over Thanksgiving, but we're just planning ahead, and so, because the next school meeting will be after all of these things begin. So we have an Every Penny Count Salvation Army Red Kettle campaign that we will be getting, and we've done that every year, and it's kind of fun for the students because every $10 that we raise on our interactive whiteboard in the lobby, we create a scene. So in the past, we've built a snowman, or we've built the characters of Frozen, and so that kind of gets them encouraged to participate, and it's so fun to see our littles come in with a handful of pennies, and they just are so proud to contribute. So it's a good way to teach our kids the importance of giving. We also do a collection for the food shelf in our building, so along with that, Holiday Fun Night is, is the first week in December, and parents can come and donate, or families donate food for the food shelf in our community. So that's exciting. As Jessica said, that we are continuing our research of ELA programs, and we are now on our third program. Now, we haven't exited any at this point in time, but we are just doing a really, really thorough search, and so I'm so excited that we are doing that and that the teachers are really vested and want to make sure that they make the best decision that is for our students. And one last thing is our school pre-K through Grade 5 is looking at transitioning from a targeted assistance school with our Title I money to a school-wide school. It is a year-long process to do that, but the purpose of doing that is Title I provides support services to our students in reading and math, and if you're a targeted assistance school, which we are and have been for several years, we're very locked into the students that we can serve. We always have more students that need help than we're able to serve in the targeted assistance school because it's based on data. With a school-wide school, it's also based on data, but it opens the door to be more flexible, so we can do different kinds of programming with our students, such as, instead of a complete pull-out program, teachers can go into the classroom and provide support to the entire classroom. So it's been a process and a big decision as to whether we wanted to move in that direction, and the other day, we had a representative from CISA come to our district, and she pretty much convinced us to start heading in that direction. So you'll perhaps hear more information about that transition as we move forward. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Good evening here. I'll be quick. Whether you're a special education teacher or administrator, you're always looking at some sort of timeline, some sort of report that's due, or something around the corner that needs to be submitted, so to carry on with that practice here, a couple updates on Indicator 14 and Indicator 11. So Indicator 14, as you know, is our surveys that we do with exited students that have disabilities, or kids that have graduated already, and we simply ask their parents or them what they're up to. What are they doing, right? Are you in college? Are you competitively employed? Are you at Northwoods Technical College? And we're happy to report here, I'm really glad to stick with the theme of positive numerical data for the district. Fifteen out of 18 of our exiters are either competitively employed or in some sort of higher education or training. So that's, 80% is a pretty good number, so I'm really pleased with that. Thanks to Jen Helbig and Dana Prindle, who do those surveys and reach out to those parents and those students. Then we also have Indicator 11. That basically measures our initial referral timelines. We have 60 days once we get consent from a parent to conduct a special education evaluation, and we only were able to find three files that needed an exception to that timeline. They were really, most of them were COVID-related. One was just a calculation error input into the system. So really, again, feel pretty good about that. Would I like to be perfect? I think we all would, but especially in the era of COVID here, which were a couple of the reasons why we missed our timeline with people being out, we feel pretty good about it. The November 8th staff training of Lost Boys was really great, just initial feedback was great. This training emphasized continuing need for the integration of both academic and social skills for kids, a way to reteach and shape positive behavior. So just got a lot of positive feedback on that from teachers. And then finally, collaboration. We've got Kisa Martin of the Aging and Disability Resource Center going to be meeting with our high school team, and this is more about transition with kids that might have more complex disabilities and needs. They might not be going to higher education. They may, may need to get support through their family with either guardianship or respite care, those sorts of things that are real practical matters for families, not just for kids, but for our community, because we know that some of these kids are going to have higher needs, and they're going to be citizens in our community, and so this is important work that, you know, collaboration that we're doing with the Disability Resource Center so that we can prepare these kids for what's happening down the road and, and support them in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything, Sean?
Just a reminder of the community meeting for the survey results this Thursday evening. High school auditorium, 6:00 p.m., if you're interested in seeing the presentation of the results, and your opportunity certainly for feedback about the results.
Okay. Now we'll go to the 2021-25 strategic plan.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. This is a continuation of work that was done back in the year 2016-2017. At that point, it was Vision 2020. The 2016 to 2020 is a five-year timeframe, and this one thereby is Vision 2025. So this is a continuation of work done by many of the folks that are still in the room here with us still. The strategic plan process is intended to provide a disciplined and thoughtful process that links the values, missions, and goals of a school system with a set of coherent strategies and tasks designed to achieve those goals. You'll see here our mission, why we exist. The mission of the school district of Amory is to foster academic excellence, lifelong learning, and citizenship. And our vision, what would we like to be? We are about innovating, leading, and succeeding. And then our values, what we believe in. We believe in public education being a safe and respectful environment, that every student can learn and grow, that staff are valued and respected, and that we have partnerships with families. And lastly, having a healthy school and community partnership fosters economic and community success. There are five parts of the strategic plan, so rather than have you wait all the way to the end and ask your questions or make your comments if you have either, I'll pause after each and every one of the sections, and then you can chime in. If there are specific questions, there are action plans that go with each of these, but it would simply result in a very long presentation. The good news is, the point person for each and every one of these strategic plan goals is in the room, so we can help you with any specifics you may have. So, starting with, the first strategy in Strategic Plan 2025 is student achievement and technology. In the area of student achievement and technology, students in the school district of Amory will demonstrate academic success as well as college and career readiness through a continuum of diversified academic opportunities encompassing real-life opportunities and alternative ways to demonstrate success. I'm not going to read every word to you. There are measurable objectives that go with each. In this case, there are three measurable objectives. I'll paraphrase by, by saying, first of all, we're looking at preparing our kids for life, a life of success after high school, whether that be the world of work or the world of school, and there are a variety of things we do here in-house to prepare them for that success. The second measurable objective is to continue to provide traditional programming and increase non-traditional offerings. We are a district that has things like project-based learning in Matasori and Genius Hour and CTE Academies, where we're building houses and doing school farms. We are a district that does those things, and we're committed to continuing to do those things. And lastly, the district will expand and upgrade resources and access to technology for all students. We're always seeking to do that. It's a moving target because technology is a very fast-moving target. We're simply trying to keep up to speed with what we have and how kids are using it. So that's the first area, and I'm going to turn it over to you if you have any questions or comments. If not, I'll continue to move forward.
So one of my questions was, under the first, first measurable objective, it says to better prepare pre-K through 12th grade students for life after high school, the district will increase the amount of time each student has access to Makerspace rooms in all buildings. And I guess I wondered why, why was Makerspace chosen, and how does that, how does access to Makerspace prepare students for life after high school?
Well, if you could come up to the mic, because no one will hear you sitting there. Thank you, Jessica.
Makerspace is a classroom in each building that has access to STEM materials, so focuses a lot on science, technology, engineering, and math. Variety of activities are always in there. Teachers are well aware of how to use those materials. Library media specialists also facilitate that learning as well. So just another avenue of learning in just a different environment for our students.
Is, so I saw on the district feed that recently, like, the fourth-grade students were making, I think, boats, and so is that like, I don't know that they went to the Makerspace lab, but is that considered Makerspace because they were using some of those materials? Or?
It's not. That actually was science. And so we have engineering kits that are part of our science curriculum, so that actually is in addition to our Makerspace. Makerspace, for example, here at the intermediate school is the building right next to us, and so we have materials that are just specific to Makerspace. That learning can be facilitated by the classroom teacher, or it can be facilitated by our library media specialists such as Annie Brayton here in this building.
Okay. So are they usually going as a classroom, or are they going individually or in groups?
As a classroom. It's a designated time throughout, throughout the week. It was every other week. I can speak for here at this building, and so it's become a primary focus for us that they have access to it every week, and that those engineering kits and those materials are being rotated out. Yeah.
Yeah, I suppose it would be different maybe at other schools. My other question underneath that one was specifically about the percentage of juniors, of students in our junior and senior class who complete the requirements to obtain college credits via transcribed courses, AP courses, and the Start College Now program. I...
Go for it, Jessica.
I, I guess I kind of struggle. I taught AP English, and I, and I think it's a great class, but I struggle with that that's a test at the end of the year, and for some, I mean, like, right now, my daughter's at AP US History. The test is until May, but her class is going to end in January. I guess I would like to see more options for students to get college credit without having to rely primarily on...
Bonnie, you should bring that up.
Bonnie, you should bring that up. We are exploring partnerships currently with the University of Wisconsin River Falls to do that very thing that you are describing. There are some catches to it. The teachers that are teaching these classes have to have a master's degree in the area. We're working on getting approval right now for two staff members at the high school. One that would give us English credit where we would no longer have to take the AP English exam. And the other area we're trying to get credit for right now is physics. We think we have two teachers that are covered. Students would not have to take the AP test. They would have to take a course which is taught to the standards of the university. And upon successfully completing that course, like we have with our current partnerships through WITC, dual-credit courses, they would get a three-credit core, or three credits through the University of Wisconsin River Falls. Now, the students, the families have to pay for the credits. It's a hundred dollars a credit, three-credit class. But that's three hundred dollars for probably a for-sure thing if you pass the class compared to approximately a hundred dollars for an AP test that, yes, you know, as a parent, I lived that myself. The stress of, you know, students working very hard. But at the end of the day, it comes down to that one test. So I brought it up to the high school staff at recent staff meetings and talked to several of them about if they want to explore opportunities to get their master's degree. This is a great path to go down because it's got benefit for our students. Plus, River Falls will pay a stipend to our teachers that are willing to participate in this program. So it's a win-win as far as we're concerned. So, yeah, we've been in communication with River Falls and we hope to have something on the table here within the next month, hopefully finalized for next school year.
Good. I just, I, you know, I taught in Minnesota and I just feel like there's so much with PSEO in Minnesota and we don't have a lot to compete with here. And, I mean, I like students to be in the building and in the classes here at the school and not having to, you know, some of them can do college.
Start College Now, yeah.
Right, but then they're usually not in the building. They're taking them online or they're going to a school. There is the CTE kind of stuff, but that's not necessarily if you're interested in a four-year degree.
Yeah. No, I would agree with everything you're saying. And I would also say that I've had some private conversations with staff members who have came to me since I began talking about this and they are interested in pursuing master's degrees in these fields, seeing the possible benefits from it.
Okay, strategic goal number two, community and family collaboration. The school district of Amory will advance strong two-way communication and collaboration systems to ensure all district stakeholders, including parents, students, staff, businesses, industry, et cetera, are informed and engaged partners. There are three measurable objectives. First, by December of two thousand twenty-two, the district will analyze current parent outreach, communication, and engagement. The second, by the spring of two thousand twenty-four, the district will build and maintain new relationships and continue the existing relationships. And lastly, by two thousand twenty-five, the district will partner with local businesses and industry to positively impact the local economy as measured by local municipal and district data. Any questions, thoughts, comments on strategic goal number two? I believe Tom was the point person on that one with Tracy Hendrickson's assistance. Yes? I got it right? Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I would just like to see, you know, more details about how we're going, how we plan to impact the local economy or create new partnerships. So, but I can look that up.
Those details are in the action plans that go with the strategic plan. This is draft version. So when we have this as a postable item on the website, the action plan goes with it. So you'll see those details there.
I think we have them from a previous.
We do. Some of these goals have changed over time. But all the action plans, it's material that they go with it because those are the point A to point Z and how to make it happen. Okay. The third strategic plan goal, to achieve a financially sustainable district that maintains quality educational programs and instruction. Andy and I both worked on this one. To increase student enrollment in district to achieve a total number of students equal to that in two thousand nineteen, twenty, by twenty-four, twenty-five. This last year, we took a dip. There were many kids, obviously, that went virtual based on COVID. So last year was not an incredibly good indicator, so thereby we picked the year before. To hold a referendum specifically stated by the Board of Education in April of two thousand twenty-two to address the facility needs of the district. We've been talking about that for a while now. And lastly, to increase the district fund balance from sixteen percent to twenty percent of our overall budget by twenty-four, twenty-five. And if you remember correctly, this has been a recommendation repeatedly for as long as I've been here by our auditor. We'll see it again this coming fall. I'm sure that will be a recommendation. It almost always is. So that's the third of the strategic plan areas. Any questions or comments on that one?
I guess, just so that public is aware, I think we've talked about it a few times at prior board meetings. I think it serves as a reminder at this point as we're talking about possibly proceeding into a referendum that district fund balance is important to have at twenty percent because if I'm not mistaken, that impacts our credit rating. Is that right, Keith?
Yeah.
And that we did have money that was in excess of that fund balance, but that money was moved into a fund that we can't touch for a little bit.
It's coming up soon.
Available and.
Hundred and eighty thousand is how much is there?
And that was not the doing of anything that we could control at the time. But that would help, I would think, if we could move that money back into our.
We can. We simply have to do the paperwork to get that done. And we already have some thoughts as to how that might be used, but that's going to be obviously a decision, but not yet because it's not come time where we can use it yet.
Right. I just wanted to, I guess, kind of remind the public that financial discrepancy has been used through the years that was worked on to have that fund balance and for circumstances that we couldn't control went to a different place. But we can, we still have access to that money coming up.
Sure. And being fiscally responsible is what puts us in a position to even think about doing a referendum. And we've talked about that as well. So that will always be priority one to make sure we are. Okay. Student engagement. The school district of Amory will improve the learning environment for all students in order to increase student engagement, both socially, emotionally, and academically. I believe Brad and people on the People Services staff were central to this effort. There are three measurable objectives. By June of twenty-four, each building will show an increase in student belongingness and engagement based on data over a two-year cycle. Second, by June of twenty-four, each building will decrease the number of students showing three or more at-risk factors as identified by building level criteria. And lastly, by June of twenty-four, each building will increase the number meeting their individual targeted growth rate among the group of students receiving Tier Two and Three reading and math interventions based on the data over a two-year cycle. And I think that is it for that one. Are there questions or comments on that area, student engagement? Okay. And the last is personnel. Cheryl Meyer has been the point person on that. The school district of Amory will strive to create the conditions that will build and maintain high-quality staff in order to provide excellence in education for all students. There are two measurable objectives. The district will continue to maintain and enhance workplace policies and culture to create conditions that will build and maintain highly qualified staff. And the district will maintain and improve a system for staff communication, collaboration, planning, preparation, and feedback. Any questions, comments on personnel? You've actually been involved in that. Each April, March into April, we have met with members of the certified staff, met with members of the support staff. It's been recently Dale and Shar and heard their feedback. Cheryl and I meet with them every four, five, six weeks. We have meetings coming up on December first and eighth, meeting with them once again on the topics of the day. And wage and benefits are topics of the day, as is workplace conditions during a pandemic. So any questions or comments that you might have?
For me, that's been a very rewarding and insightful process to be a part of as a board member. We've sat through several meetings where we've listened to well-thought-out wants, needs in order to better facilitate with our staff. And it really gives us a look into things that they do that we don't necessarily think of or we hear of as a board. It's been a very rewarding process to see the camaraderie for people that speak up for each other. But it's also been a very pleasurable back-and-forth experience that as a board, we have financial responsibility and due diligence to the community. But we also have that responsibility to our employees and to retain employees. And it's been a good, it's been a good experience on both.
I couldn't agree more. There isn't a certified staffer, support staff I would rather work with. They're fantastic to work with. And the answer isn't always yes. But we have good conversation about what we're seeking to do and we want to treat our employees right. It's very important. The last slide is the action steps. Each of the five strategic goal action plans has further detail, including action steps, timelines, and evidence sought. The new strategic plan will be available on the school website once these groups then reconvene and take any feedback that you have provided. And then it's a final document and we'll have it out there on the website for us to use as our guiding document on the decisions that we make. And that is it. And there's no action needed on this. It's simply an informational item.
Setting goals is important. We all need to do that. Next up will be the Esser money.
Andy and I have been in conversation on this, George Sigsworth as well. We have been on far more Zoom calls than we care to remember about trying to figure this puzzle out. When you have the four hundred-plus school districts, plus state agencies, plus federal government, all trying to figure things out, it's not the easiest process. So there is a lot of question marks out there and most of them not of our doing. So what this presentation is, is a summary of what we have done with Esser money, rounds one. And round two, A and B. And then what are we set to do with round three? Nothing's happened with round three yet. And you'll see that when you get to the material that's in this presentation. First, what is an Esser allocation? It is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. That's where you get the acronym Esser. That's all education needed was another acronym. That's what it stands for. Onto the next page, you'll see there are three rounds. Round two has an A and a B. The first round of Esser, this seems like forever and a day ago, was, you could spend this on, the list had to be a hundred deep in regards to what you could use it for. We received one hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. Remember, Esser is a grant from the federal government and then disseminated through the state to you. We use that money to pay our clubhouse childcare staff. Remember, in March, April, and May of two thousand twenty, they weren't here. None of us were here. And all of them were basically set out to pasture without work to be done. If we hadn't paid them, they likely would have went and found other work and we would have been really in big trouble in childcare. Again, we could have spent one hundred and thirty-five thousand in any way, shape, or form in that hundred. We simply chose to pay our staff. That was the choice we made. For Esser two, round A and round B, some five hundred and forty-six thousand in round A, some three hundred and two thousand in round B. Again, from federal government through state to us, every district receives a different amount. So that puts us at about eight hundred and forty-eight. We used every bit of that money to pay for the HVAC system at Lean Elementary, the system we went talking about here now for six months. If we hadn't replaced that system, there would be no heat at the elementary. And if we hadn't used this money, we would have been using district funds that we ordinarily would have allocated to other things for that. It could not wait. We couldn't wait for a referendum to get that done because I imagine the elementary would get awfully cold. So we used that money and it was well timed and it was. Stated reasons what you could use it for, improving your ventilation. Likely since the day the elementary opened way back in nineteen sixty-seven, the ventilation in the elementary has never been better. So it was money well spent.
And these were both passed on board action at.
These were both. Absolutely. And you saw, we didn't, we only had really one bidder on the HVAC project because it was almost a undoable project because you were putting holes in walls and deconstructing large units. It was quite a deal to get that done. Now, Esser three, the dollar value that is earmarked for the school district of Amory is one million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. To be determined. We haven't spent that money yet because there hasn't been an application to submit in order to determine how you're going to spend that money. And you'll see here, the money must be sent, spent by September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. And the emphasis is on addressing and assessing, assessing and addressing learning loss. And we're just in the process now of assessing what that learning loss was. Remember, our students lost five months of in-person learning. Three back in the spring of two thousand twenty and two more in the fall of two thousand twenty. That's had an impact statewide, nationwide, and it has here too. So the goal is for Esser three, as stated by federal government, is all activities supported by Esser three must prevent, must prevent, prepare for, or respond to COVID-nineteen pandemic. The respond to is the learning loss piece and we're seeking to figure out how to do that. So the details, you have to have no less than twenty percent of the allocation. So of the one point two-two, twenty percent of that is some two hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated for the purpose of addressing learning loss using the evidence-based interventions. Tomorrow, in this room, the administrative team meets. It's on the agenda. The first item is, what is the measurement of our learning loss that we have determined to this point in the school year twenty-one, twenty-two? What has been lost? Specifically, what areas are lacking? And specifically, what kids or what groups of kids have met with that learning loss? And then what resources are we going to target in order to make up for that loss? That's what Esser three ultimately boils down to. The interventions must be for academic, social, emotional needs of kids disproportionately affected by COVID-nineteen. Special ed students were disproportionately affected by COVID-nineteen. That's been documented nationwide. Families that live in low-income households, that, those are our students that have been affected most by COVID-nineteen. Those are just two examples. So the application isn't open yet to submit for Esser three dollars. The underlining is not mine. The underlining is from Esser three, straight from the Department of Public Instruction, straight from the federal government, including paying employees to the greatest extent practicable. They want folks to be able to be paid as part of this plan. We haven't had that issue since the spring of two thousand twenty and hopefully we won't. But that's something they want as an emphasis. The plan must be developed in consultation with stakeholders. That means members of the community. We've got plans to do that. There must be a safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan. We've already enacted that. We've already voted on that and we viewed it again two or three times. And the budget, including the description of the steps to be taken to overcome applicable barriers to ensure application access for all students, that's part of the application. You have to have a budget that goes with it. So engagement with stakeholders, engaging with students to determine the learning loss there, engaging with families to determine the learning loss there, school and district administrators, and lastly, teachers, principals, school leaders, other educators, everyone that works here, to determine what would be the best steps and how to spend this money to determine, so as to determine that we have addressed learning loss in an appropriate way which we can help kids thereby be successful. So again, twenty percent allocated for learning loss, five percent on evidence-based instructions aimed specifically at that learning loss, such as summer school or summer enrichment, extended day, one percent on summer enrichment programs, one percent on evidence-based comprehensive after-school programs. All of that's part of the picture. Identify, here are our steps and I've sort of already stole my own thunder. Identify and measure the degree of learning loss. Identify students who have demonstrated significant learning loss. Identify existing resources and then identify additional resources. That's going to be the work of our district team with the help of our kids and our families and our community to figure out how to do this. We've never done it before. So our action plan is, we're beginning that process tomorrow. The process has already begun in light of determining where our kids stand. We've been doing benchmark testing at the elementary and intermediate school. doing benchmark testing at the elementary and intermediate school the entire year already. And the middle school and high school does their progress monitoring in a different way, but we've already, we've already identified we have lost that has occurred. How we couldn't have, I wouldn't have no idea. Work with certified staff and support staff to gather their feedback. Work with our students, and lastly, work with our community to gauge their feedback. So we need approval. First of all, the state of Wisconsin needs approval from the Department of Education to disseminate the Esser three dollars. They haven't received approval yet. The application is set to open on November 29th. That is the Monday after Thanksgiving week, and Thanksgiving is next week. So the Department of Education at the federal level is going to have to let the state know, or I don't know that November 29th is a very realistic application date window open. But that's not my call and it's no one's call in this room. That's up to the federal government telling states when it's received approval yet. Once the window is open, you got 90 days to submit your application. So if it did open on November 29th, we would have until late February, early March approximately to get that done. So we would have to do the work that I identified in previous slides in that time. If it's December 29th, then it's late March, early April. I don't know when that's going to happen. That's, this is information as of last week Friday, so it's not old information. So the state of Wisconsin, remember this about Esser dollars, Esser three. We're talking a lot about learning loss. We did not receive as a school district, no school district in the state of Wisconsin received any kind of an increase in per pupil aid. The increase was $0 in the biennial budget, which is 21 to 23. $0. And the reason stated is, we're not doing an increase in per pupil aid is because you're getting Esser dollars. Okay, so that's money we're going to have to use for our expenditures. This is not, we can't spend $1.2 million on learning loss and not have any other money to spend on anything else, or we're going to be in big trouble. Because we're not getting any money from the state in 21, 22. We're not getting any money from the state in 22, 23. What happens in 23, 24, that's up to the next state legislature when they do the 23 to 25 biennium. I don't know what that looks like. I only know what the here and the now looks like. So we're going to wait and see mode, but we have to be careful about how we use this money. You can move on to the next one. Oh, that's it. So the picture, it seems clear, but there's a lot of confusion out there around this application from the Department of Public Construction, from the state legislature, from districts, from CISA's. I've never seen so many head shakes in all my life on Friday at my Zoom meeting with the CISA 11 superintendents. And that was with information straight from the Department of Public Construction. If you're asking me, is this going to open on November 29th? I don't think there's any way that that's going to occur. I don't know how much work's going to get done next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving. I don't have any idea when it's going to open. But when it's open, we're going to be ready to roll. We're not going to submit it the day after, but we will do our due diligence to make sure it's submitted in a timely fashion with all the necessary feedback that is needed gathered. So questions for me, or unless Andy has more clarity, he can provide it to you.
I just, I hope to be able to claim funds by the end of the school year. That's my goal. So get the application. I guess the confusion over what is an application versus was a budget, that might be some of the confusion too, is that a lot of times when we're submitting things, there's things that we've already started to do, you know, collaboration with all the partners we have to collaborate with. And that's out there on the, on the website. But beyond that, you have to submit a budget for what you're going to be spending things on. And that might be the confusion where people wonder about an application versus, versus a budget. So I just wanted to put that out there, that that might be some of the confusion on what they call an application. Not the same, but you might consider an application, so.
Yeah, I guess we regret, even as we go through as board members and we approve our vouchers every month, and how much money the district has to spend. And that, that doesn't just all come from property taxes. It comes from a wide variety of funding sources in the budget and the per pupil and, and these grants and funds that we apply for. And that there's always, when the state gives money or the federal government gives money, there's always stipulations tied to that money, how we can use it. And I think we've always, in the last couple of years, we've been pretty open, trying to go through those things as we're conducting our business here. I think, Andy, you've done a really great job. Dr. Duffley, I think you've done a really great job of keeping the board informed of our, our due diligence of how to spend that money, what that money's for, where it's coming from. And I can't always say that that's always necessarily been the case, but balancing budgets and making sure that staff are paid and the doors are open and the lights are on is, is a lot. So at the end of the day, when we're talking about how money is spent just to keep our people employed, who obviously are doing a really good job, I, it really makes my heart happy to see that, that school perception survey ranking up there in that 99th percentile of the job that we're doing as a district. That's, it's all tied to money, unfortunately. I mean, if we could all do this job for, for free and have an unlimited amount of resources, it would make things a lot easier. But unfortunately, it's just not the way it is.
A lot of unknowns, but we'll stand ready to do our work as we always are.
And be transparent about it as much, you know, as much as we can be. And that's the, our goal, so.
Any other comments or questions?
So you're meeting tomorrow to start kind of working on getting a plan ready, even though-
Well, what tomorrow is, we're talking about what law, what learning losses occurred. And we have standardized data and benchmark data to begin that process. We have a lot of data. What does it mean, is the question. And then to identify which groups of kids this is, which specific subject area, specific skills and subjects have, have had the biggest dip. And then identify the resources we still have in place that we can use, and then identify what else we need. The what else we need might be that $250,000. Now, I would hesitate when someone suggests let's add staff. But when you add staff, are you adding them for two years and then they're on their way? Because once you get out past two years, there's no funding for additional staff.
And there's a-
You can, but you got to be careful about that.
And there's a big fear of, you know, the fiscal cliff when all this federal money's not there, that they're saying backfill your budgets with. And that'll be in the two years. And that's, that's the scary one, you, you know, if you add a lot of staff and things, like I said, yeah, there's more likely not going to be, there'll be hopefully additional, optimistically, there's additional funding the next biennium, but that's not a for sure thing. And I don't want to be in the position where you've got to cut staff because you don't have the funding for them, so.
Yeah, I think we've had that discussion a couple of times before when we talked about adding some staff. And it's, are we going to add these, the staff members that we know are important key players? But then how long are we going to last? And that, that doesn't do anybody any service either, as we know that kids really benefit from being consistent, having consistent people around, consistent services. And those are all things to be mindful of. I see that on the learning loss, there's a 1% for evidence-based comprehensive after-school programs. Has there been any discussion in what those might center around yet, or is that all part of the process?
No, no, not yet. Yeah, it's part of the process. Did you have a question here? And I sort of cut you off. I'm sorry.
Oh, I don't know. I lost it.
Because I truly did cut you off. I got so excited. Any other comments or questions? Okay, much more to follow.
Okay. Well, that's it for our informational items. We'll move on to our action items. And first is a boys JV hockey co-op.
Okay, I'm here representing Jeff Fern in the athletic department in this particular family. Jeff's doing the basketball scrimmage. No rest for the weary. We moved right into winter sports. So what you see here is a Osceola-Amory agreement to allow a student to play JV hockey as part of the Amory team. Little backstory, and if I get it wrong, Josh, you're going to correct me, I hope. Osceola did have a co-op with Somerset until Somerset decided to no longer have a co-op. So that left Osceola hockey interested parties out to dry. So they're looking for an opportunity for their JV son to play hockey here in Amory. So what this agreement spells out is that we would allow that to occur. There's no WIAA approval needed to enter into a co-op for a JV kid. This is simply a formality to make it happen here. And on Wednesday, and Osceola has a board meeting, and they would have to also board approve. And then we would be locked in and this student would be able to hockey. Our position, I'll quote Jeff, "Any opportunity that we can provide kids to be able to be a part of athletics, I'd be in favor of." I couldn't agree more.
This is just one child?
One kid. That's all we have right now is one interested party.
Would this cover if there were more interested parties?
If there was more interested parties, we thought, we now have a JV co-op for hockey if kids wanted to do that.
Any interested students will have an opportunity?
I've only heard from the one.
The important thing to realize, oh, this is for JV only. It is not up to the varsity level in any machine.
So once you get to varsity level, then you got WIA involvement.
Yeah.
So-
And is varsity, we don't co-op varsity for, for boys. We do for girls.
Not with Osceola.
Boys hockey co-op, just not with Osceola.
Oh, okay. Who do we go off with?
Clear Lake and Clayton.
Clear Lake and Clayton in Amory have partnered for a while now. So you would need to take action in order to approve this arrangement if you see it necessary.
And how many members are on the JV team today?
Currently?
Yeah, like this season, are we-
I mean, to be honest-
We have strong numbers or?
It's always nice to have an extra one or two or three people. We've had some boys that have had to skate a couple of shifts on the JV and then varsity. So there's playing time out there.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
And second is Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. There we go.
Thank you.
And we have the second reading of the seclusion restraint, restraint policy.
Okay. Brad, you could assist me. This again is the second reading. We got some feedback from you last time. And you'll see on the second reading, there is some blue that would indicate what has been changed. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Brad, and you could specifically mention what that blue is about.
Yeah, there are just a couple changes, and it's on the second to last and last page. In reviewing the language here, the template language really, which this is, I noticed here that it was missing a designee here. This says the school principals will prepare and present and hand a report to the board. In reality, typically, that's been my position doing that. So just added that designee, just to get clarity there and, and unless the principals want to deliver that report.
I was just going to thank you on their behalf.
And then the last change here was really this disciplinary action for violation of this policy. This is really, you know, would only be needed in the case of, you know, an egregious violation. So there is some language here. It's pretty strong language. You know, I feel fairly confident that, you know, if we were to run into a scenario or a situation like this, that our current evaluation system and structure would be able to address it fairly well. So I've struck that just out of concern from a previous reading, but we could certainly change our minds and keep it in.
Okay. So this is a second reading, so it would need action by you if you want to adopt this.
I'll just, I guess it was my concern in the last prior board meeting about the disciplinary action being spelled out in the policy without strong standing, barring, you know, a legal opinion on that. I feel better that we have just struck it out so that it's not specific. And then obviously, if those things were to happen, I just, I can't see it happening. But if it did, it would be handled on a case-by-case basis, and it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be tied to it in any way. So I would be in favor of just striking the language completely. So with that, I guess I would move to approve the use of seclusion and physical restraint with students' policy as presented.
And do we have a second?
A second.
Aaron. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carried. And now we have the emergency school closings policy.
This is the second reading of the emergency school closings policy. There isn't any change to speak of, other than the fact that we did recently get snow. So it's a reminder, it's on its way.
Yeah.
So basically, what this again allows us to do is the first three days of snow day weather events, those are regular old, go outside and do your thing, don't come to school days. And after that, it gives us the opportunity to do virtual days rather than make up days in June. I'm sure you could probably well imagine, days made up in June are not the most productive days. So we would do virtual days, starting with day four and onward. So we need a motion to accept that.
I'm for it.
Shar?
I'll move to accept the emergency school closings policy as presented.
And a second?
Second.
Dale. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No. Motion's carried.
There's the second policy that's impacted.
Oh, yep, the second policy, it has old language, master contracts, and that type of language is just outdated. And then the updated November 15th date.
Make motion that we approve, policy 321.
I don't know that we can do that. We don't have that on our agenda.
Uh, this is, it's cross-reference.
Cross.
Yeah.
So it's part of your first motion.
First motion. So do we even need a motion?
You wouldn't need a motion.
No, I didn't think so. So, okay. With that, we'll move on to the appointment of our WASB delegates.
The Wisconsin State Education Convention, that's 101st, coming up here in January. We need to do the appointment of a WASB delegate. In recent years, that has been Erin. I haven't spoken to Erin about her high-paying gig as delegate, assembly person. That's news to you. So you would need to make a motion as who you want to delegate. Maybe Erin wants to make a motion that she does it. I don't know.
And as of right now, who's going to the-
We haven't discussed that, but the usual suspects. There hasn't been any change from last year to this year, other than being back in person, same location, same types of agenda, same time of year. It's still on.
I think Erin's been the delegate for the past couple of years, and I've been the alternate. And then I was the delegate prior. So it, it's up to you. I mean, if you want to be the delegate and I'll be an alternative for some reason you can't attend. I mean, I've been the delegate for several years, but it doesn't matter to me. I plan on going.
Yeah. And I plan on going to the, to the convention also. I'm happy to be the delegate. Last year it was online, and that was very interesting.
Yeah, that's not as successful.
I don't want to do online.
I don't have the patience for that.
Hundreds of people.
Yeah. That's a long day on Zoom.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
Do I have a motion to appoint Erin as the-
Sure, I'll make them, I'll make the motion to have me be the delegate and Chelsea be the alternate.
Okay, and a second? Chelsea?
Seven.
Okay, Shar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, we've got our delegates. Now we need to review the COVID-19 return to school plan.
Okay, this is the third or fourth time we've seen this. The only change here is we've got more new numbers. This tracks us through November 6th through the 12th, and then the 13th through the 19th, which is this week. We've only got one day. We've only had one case. Last week, we had five. We've been hovering around eight to 12 in given weeks. Nothing more than that. Again, the learning transition plan with the matrix there, we need to be at 20 and in, in one particular building in order to have any kind of a change. And we haven't even come close to that yet. And hopefully, we don't. So it's up to you if you want to make a change, or no action needed at all if you just want to keep things as is.
I feel like it's been working well. Do our principals feel like it's going well in your buildings?
Yeah. I don't think you get it.
Josh is probably the one that, you know.
Mr. Cool's take all. I don't know.
We're in school every day.
That's the key.
There are times when staffing is an issue.
Yep.
Because of, if one building specifically, you have a lot of people out, you may have to combine things. I've taught all kinds of classes that have been pretty interesting.
We've identified, we've identified our learning loss, the ones that Tom's teaching.
Yes, there we go.
I appreciate it. You know, but there are times when we have like five, four different people, counselors, and people teaching, and giving classes, and rotating around to make it work. But it's the best we can do.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks to the staff for continuing to hold in there, make it work, making sure that kids get education and, and a place to be here. And, and we all know it's, it's important. And I think we were talking before about identifying these losses of education. And it's, we can see it on test scores. We see it. I think Cheryl's presented the information. Morley Shock presented information. And, and now this year, it was Mrs. Dambrosia. And we could see those reading scores going down in our younger kids. And it's not just- could see those reading scores going down in our younger kids, and it's not just the test scores that we see that's the problem, but really, kids have checked out after not being in school for, for five months and longer. They're checked, they're checked out emotionally, it's hard. There's a lot of things that these kids are grappling with emotionally. I think we probably see it a lot at the high school, and to get them back, how do we get them back into the mode of coming to school, being consistent every day, being ready to learn, those, those things are important, and that's probably something that you'll be talking about tomorrow when you talk about your loss of learning, and I, to see the staff being resilient and trying to make that a go for these kids, hats off to the staff.
Nora Speaker said something last Monday that was, I thought, excellent analogy. She said, you know, the pandemic's been like a flood, and some of our kids, they've been on a yacht and everything's been all well and good, but some kids are drifting along in the water, just holding on to a piece of driftwood, and that is true. We have kids that are barely swimming right now, based on what pandemic has done to households. It's been really hard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's it. It's a, I'm sorry, that was a, not meant to be a downer, but it was, it's, it is, and I think it's something that we just don't talk about enough, and the reasons that we look at taking this money and the good that we can do with it, and the surveys that we do, and you can, you can talk about the bad things about the surveys, or you talk about the good things, but either way, we have kids that were struggling before this, and we have, we have parents that are struggling, we have community members that are struggling, and to see it, to see it come into our kids, you know, our staff has to look at that every day and make the best of it, and I think it's a, it's an opportunity to, to really think about all of, all of that and how it all works together and what we can do to, to make the best of it, so. Thanks for pitching in and doing your, doing your best to get these kids where they need to go.
Yes. You care, and that's the important thing. The kids know that. And with that, do we need to do anything?
Personnel.
Personnel.
And now we'll do the personnel. Well, I know with the transismile, I am just asking if they want to do something.
No change.
No, no.
So personnel, new employee contracts for Kendrick Gunther, bus driver, extra C contract, girls soccer head coach, Chris Boyd, resignation, or reassignments, I should say, Vicki Heiss moving from van driver to bus driver, resignations for Wyatt Komanic, Justin Shu, and Chuck Wellman in middle school football, Nicole Link in school nutrition, and Laura Wernland in clubhouse for, as an assistant teacher. So those, we need an action for to approve that personnel list.
Move to approve the personnel action.
Thank you, Shar. Second?
Second.
Erin? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay. We don't need to go into closed session, and so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no.